Do I have a motion to adjourn the private session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to call to order the November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, regular business meeting of the Lacy Township Board of Education. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January seventh, two thousand and fifteen, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Will you please join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, interior republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the very essence of God.
If you could all please remain standing, just like take moment of silence, reflection, and think of all those who were lost in Paris, France, on Friday. Thank you. Page eighteen, do I have a motion to approve the board minutes for the agenda meeting held on October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mr. De Senza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the board minutes and appropriate attachments for the regular meeting held?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the board minutes for the private session held on October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen?
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Now turning to page thirty-six, do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills totaling five million, nine hundred, twenty-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars and twenty cents?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes, on all except page thirty-one, two-six-oh-five-two-seven-nine-five-three-oh-one-three and nine-five-three-oh-one-four.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza, are you voting no on those other?
Just those three, yes, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
No.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution?
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downey.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
On page thirty-seven, Mr. Stein, do you have anything to report at this time?
There will be two, at least two in our motion at the end of the agenda.
Thank you. And now, for one of our favorite parts, our student representatives, who would like to go first tonight?
Okay. Okay, the sophomores are selling thirty-dollar stadium blankets, please contact Ms. Taskin if you would like to purchase one. They're also working on rent to senior for the spring and the speedball tournament. The juniors are doing a power club football game, it's on Saturday, November twenty-first, it's when the girls play football. The seniors, we're talking about prom colors, and we're selling senior hoodies, and we have a pajama day coming up, it's November thirtieth, they pay two dollars to wear pajamas, and it's going to save the children. November eleventh was the Veterans Day ceremony, all officers attended, and Carly Miller, the SGA Executive President made a speech.
We're holding a Battle of the Classes from December seventeenth to December twenty-third. From November ninth to the twentieth, we can buy Battle of the Classes t-shirts. First place gets fifty percent of the money, second place gets thirty, third place gets fifteen, and fourth place gets five percent of the money. Each event held is for points. We have a spirit week along with the Battle of the Classes. Thursday is Animal Day, Friday is Lacy School Spirit Day, Monday is Plano Plaid Day, Tuesday is Holiday Spirit Day, and Wednesday is Battle of the Classes T-shirt Day. The events we are holding is Good Deeds Competition, a Food Bank Food Drive, hallway decorations, banners, chants, and the games, which include three-legged race, a dizzy bat race, tug-of-war, and a grand relay. Students are to sign up with their grades advisors to participate on December twenty-third. On December nineteenth, we're holding a winter formal for freshmen and sophomores. Freshmen and sophomores may only bring current LTHS students. The ticket sales are from December eighth to the tenth for fifteen dollars, and December fifteenth through the seventeenth for twenty dollars. And we are holding a Food Bank fundraiser, and the teachers and staff will be paying five dollars for making a food donation on November twenty-fifth and December twenty-third to wear jeans.
Can we have November's Matthew Blum Unsun Hira Award recipient, Jacqueline Frazee?
November's Matthew Blum Unsun Hira Award recipient is proudly presented to Jacqueline Frazee. Not only does Jacqueline display a positive attitude and willingness to help others, she also is an above-average honor student and participates in many activities. Jacqueline shows an immense amount of dedication to student government, she's the Vice President of the Executive Board. She planned our homecoming this year and participates in many events supported by the student government. Jacqueline strives to promote school spirit and has created many of the ideas for our school spirit weeks. She advertises and participates in every school spirit week and encourages her classmates to do the same. Jacqueline is involved with basketball cheer and also participates in dance, tap, and jazz. She strives for academic success in all honors classes and an AP Chemistry course as a junior and is also a student in our STEM program. On top of her busy schedule, Jacqueline has made time to work in an attorney's office and volunteers her time to coach a middle-school age recreation girls' lacrosse team. Many of the events at Lacy Township High School would not be possible without the hard work and dedication of this month's Matthew Blum Unsun Hira Award, Jacqueline Frazee. Can any parents please stand?
Will her parents please stand up? Thank you very much, Lindsay and Carly. Dr. Anthony. So we delight in celebrating this month's Unsun Hira, and also in the students that Mr. Henshaw is about to introduce us to tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony, if I may invite the board to join us over here in Stan's place. Every month we get to present to you our Students of the Month, the Students of the Month for November. Of course, we have two of our great students to share with you. First, I'd like to bring up Kayla Sandsbier. Kayla? If you may have her family please stand, I know you're trying to get a picture of me, but if you would mind saying anything? If you could roll our tape.
Hello, I'm Mr. Henshaw, welcome to the Senior Spotlight November, where we are stating Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Kayla Sandsbier. Kayla is highly ranked in her class and maintains a weighted four-point-one GPA. She is also heavily involved in athletics and extracurricular activities, her Lacy Township High School. Kayla, can you tell us about some of the clubs that you're involved with?
I am a part of the Interact Club, Intergenerational Club, the Association Against Drug and Alcohol, Student Government Association, and also much other clubs.
Once again, staying very busy in school, this is amazing. How about athletics, what do you do at the athletic arena?
I manage the football team, the Junior varsity and varsity, and I'm on my third year with that.
Wow, so you're staying very busy after school and during school. What do you like to do outside of school?
I enjoy exercising a lot, and I also like hanging out with my dog and watching movies.
What kind of dog do you have?
She's a Pekingese, she's a Pekingese and a poodle.
What's your dog's favorite movie?
I'm not too fond of act, I'll be back to you.
Oh, no, you can't. What about your future plans to go to college?
I plan on attending Bucknell University, I find out in a month if I'm accepted, and I want to study psychology and eventually get my doctorate in online business.
And weren't you just accepted to a school?
Yes, I was. I was accepted to Arcadia University with an eighty-thousand-dollar scholarship.
Give you five on that, congratulations. Congratulations, Kayla, on your selection of Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with Mike Nattoli.
Well, congratulations, we're very proud of you. And good luck on Bucknell.
If I may invite down Mike Nattoli, please, Mike? And as Mike makes his way, if we have his family, please stand, congratulations. If you don't recognize Mike, Mike is the guy behind all the cameras, so he had his chance this time. Here we go, thank you very much.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight November, now joining us the Senior of the Month, Mike Nattoli. Mike is ranked in the top fifty percent of his class and is heavily involved behind the scenes here in Lacy in the arts program, especially at WLTS TB21, where he is the co-student station manager. Mike, can you tell us about some of the work you've done for TB21?
Well, first off, let me apologize in advance if I'm not the best at like talent on here, I'm usually used to being behind the camera. So, what we do in the, what I usually do in WLTS, I'm really involved in with the student filmmaking aspect of it. Over the summer, I produced a promo, actually, for Lacy, an informative promo, like welcoming people into the town, showing like the highlights of the town, things like that. I produced a ice hockey segment on the, or I should say, a new segment on the ice hockey team here at Lacy Township High School, which is, it's the first year that we've had one, so that's, that was pretty interesting, and I had excellent experience doing that and tons of other projects.
I remember seeing that, and you're one of the guys behind the cameras here when we do Student of the Month.
I am, yeah, usually.
So you also remember the Civil Air Patrol, can you tell us about what you do there and what you do as part of the crew?
Yeah, I'm, I'm what they call over there a flight leader, which is basically like a balloon leader or something like that. It's like an auxiliary of the US Air Force, and they teach kids leadership skills, aerospace education, they're dedicated to disaster relief and, and emergency services, it's just a really good program. And the thing I like about it the most is I get to fly airplanes, like they, they provide free lessons for you.
That's pretty cool, I'll go off with you someday, maybe a little more experience than that, I'm trying to pick me up. What do you love to do outside of school?
When I'm not bugging, Mr. Merlin lets me into the TV station to do more producing. Usually, I usually do a lot of Civil Air Patrol, I, I work actually at Shoprate, I've worked there for a couple of years now, it's a great place to work for. Aside from that, I do National Honor Society, and I just recently got involved with the SGA, Student Government Association, and other different clubs like that, like Future Business Leaders of America, I do a lot.
All right, the next question is the toughest, future planes were yours?
No, those are the questions. I plan to go to Montclair State University to study Communications and Minor Business. I, my dream is eventually to become a producer for NBC.
Well, when you make, make sure you and I stay high, I have to say, I know someone very famous, and will be you.
Oh, without a doubt.
You've done a great job here at Lacy Township, part of our school community, we're very proud of you. Congratulations, Mike, on your selection of Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
That's it, wrap up Senior Spotlight November.
Small for the camera. Excellent job, thank you for all these stuff.
Future Education and Dr. Anthony, Dr. Clark for this opportunity to present our Students of the Month, thank you very much.
So you can all see why that's our favorite part of the meeting. Another part of the meeting we enjoy is sharing all the wonderful things that are happening in our schools, and I, I know that I've been mentioning this to you each and every month, but the artwork that is being displayed by our students as we celebrate the Student Superintendent's Report and also the current agenda, this month, the middle school is sponsoring our school cover, and the artwork by Ally Ward, the seventh grader, and Jack Mangan is outstanding. And I also need to give a shout out to our art department here at the high school, I hope you've had an opportunity to see some of the work right outside, here in the clear, and also some of the ceramic displays over, if you walk straight down to the right, Dr. Clark and I were having some fun this evening, just identifying our favorite pieces. So, Mr. Henshaw, the high school looks awesome, and thank you so much for, for celebrating and sharing all the artwork with your students. And thank you, Jack and Ally. Each of the students that get selected receives a letter from my office and a hard copy of their artwork as well. I also just want to take a moment and orient you to some of the things in the Superintendent's Report that I feel, that I want to share with you. And first, really a shout out to all of our parent groups, our PTAs, O's, and, and Esays on the incredible work that you're doing to support our students at Forkett River School, this month particularly, helping us celebrate literature with the Monster Book Fair, and there are book fairs in many of our schools, also at Forkett River, the celebrations of Red Ribbon Week in October, and you'll see that theme as well on page four. And then finally, we had, Dr. Clark and I had the opportunity to join Carly, I know some board members did as well, on Veterans Day, to honor those who have served our country, and she represented our school district just so incredibly well, we're honored, and so many people came up to me to mention our students and the students that were there, we had students from the middle school and from the high school, so I thank their advisors for bringing them as well. I also want to take a moment and share with you at Cedar Creek. Cedar Creek is having an incredible month of giving with the March of Dimes and the fundraising that they did for national breast cancer awareness. And it's also a great time to thank our, our first responders here in town, Lacy, we celebrated the work that they do and helped our students understand the importance of, of keeping safe in an emergency, a fire, so we had a lot of visits from our fire companies. And at Lenoka, I want to share with you, at Lenoka Harbor School, they applied for and received a grant from the teacher's insurance plan, and at Lenoka, they're starting a new project called Project Pride, and they're focusing on Making Good Choices, and this is an incredible program because it really is helping our children build confidence in themselves and treating others with respect and kindness, all skills that last a lifetime. Also, at Lenoka Harbor, one of our students, Katie Parks, was selected as the second-place winner by the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders for her artwork, which was on display at the Ocean County Mall, so congratulations, Katie. And as always, our students do an amazing job in supporting Lacy Food Bank, and so you'll see that thread woven, especially this time of year as we embark upon the holidays. I want to especially mention that the Lenoka Harbor staff and students raised almost ninety-five dollars in honor of, in memory of Mrs. Curtin, who was part of the Lenoka Harbor family for thirty years. Over at Mill Pond School, they too were raising awareness for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and they painted the pond pink on October twentieth, also celebrated Good Choices with a drug-free school program with Red Ribbon Week. And I also want to mention that at Mill Pond, Sir Dougherty is recognizing Joe Brossem and Holly Nemick. Joe Brossem is our band teacher, and he was recognized by the annual State Music Educators' Conference to be a part of that particular conference with helping other music educators all over the state, so that's an incredible honor, along with Holly Nemick, who was selected to do professional development at the Ocean County Professional Development Center that is sponsored by Stocked, and also Holly turnkey some of that with our new teacher orientation. So I want to thank those two teachers and recognize them for their incredible work, and tonight I'll be mentioning two more teachers to you tonight as well. Over at the middle school, Ella Johnson, Peter Vanderwork, Lauren Knopman, and David Tambora were all recognized by the middle school staff as Students of the Month, and I just want to mention, Ella, what's standing out for you is not only that you are a credible friend, but also Ella is recognized as a New Jersey boxing champion, so that caught my eye and particularly notable. Peter Vanderwork was recognized for his compassion and always helping others and making them smile, always saying hello to people. Lauren, for your work on the softball team and the Intergenerational Club, and is a peer mediator, and finally, David, who is recognized for being a positive influence, always being kind and welcoming, and especially sharing his voice, talents with us. Over at the middle school again, Linda Kirk, I've mentioned her, I think last month, Linda, for your work in helping coordinate the Scholastic Book Fair. And finally, I want to segue over to a program that came across my desk and as well as Dr. Clark's back in February, and it was an invitation for us to identify three nominees for the Secondary Educator Exemplary Award with the State of New Jersey. And so we asked our school administrators to recognize teachers. Sometimes these awards are self-nominated, and sometimes teachers know that they're being nominated, but in this particular case, confidentiality was really important, and I want to share with the board and the members of our audience and TV audience tonight, that one of our teachers was recognized and awarded as New Jersey two thousand and fifteen Exemplary Secondary Educator of the Year. The criteria is this, you need to be an exceptional teacher, you need to show extraordinary talent, you need to have evidence of instructional practices and student learning being highly effective on your evaluation, you need to demonstrate exemplary educational accomplishments outside of the classroom and beyond the classroom that provide others with models of excellence. Your contributions to education need to be largely unheralded, yet worthy of the spotlight, and you must have an engaging and inspiring presence that motivates and impacts students, colleagues, and the community. And if you've been in this educator's classroom, you know that that certainly typifies his work. It is a pleasure to let you know and an honor that Jason King, Mr. Edward Saboko, and also, we had one other person, Mr. King, where are you? Sue Andrews also was a part of the nominating committee, thank you, it came right to me. So those three school leaders submitted the name of Mr. Michael Howout, and I'm proud to share with you tonight that Michael Howout is New Jersey's Exemplary Educator of the Year for Lacy, so we'd like to, there you are, I see you now, come on down. Michael, thank you for everything you've done, and my own son had the benefits of your wonderful teaching, and I got to tell you, if any buddies had a child in this class, they talk about him, they love him, and they love him even in the community, he reaches out to them when they see him in the community, and that's just shows how you touch all their lives, so thank you so much.
It's a great, it's a great honor, it's, thank you very much for being nominated. It's, it's nice to know our work pays off and it's evident in the kids, and it's nice to know that the kids enjoy it and have pushing that love for science and having that love come back for it is just beyond words. Thank you.
I also want to share with you that one of our own is quite an accomplished author, and I shared with the board in your packet on Friday, another article that just printed in the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, written by our own Brenda Camaligan, and I see you back there, Brenda, there you are. So this is a big deal, because this is a peer-reviewed journal, and, thank you, thank you, and it is a peer-reviewed journal, and your article this time, Brenda, math is going to the dogs, love it, and congratulations, and thank you so much for continuing to just exemplify the very best of teaching and learning and including us in your work, thank you. I was just sharing with Dr. Anthony, it's my understanding, this is not the first time you've been published, because I know I've read other articles of yours, and even as an adult, I learned something, so it's extremely helpful, and I know that Forkett River does beautiful work with their parents, trying to teach the parent on how to learn the math so they can help their own students, so I thank you for all that you share with our learning community, thank you. I want to just put a shout out to all of our fall athletes and thank you for an incredible season. I also want to mention that our high school guidance and counseling staff is hosting an open house on this Wednesday, the eighteenth, at six-thirty, I hope that you'll find some time to join us and meet your child's counselor or just come and check out some of the programs, so that's this Wednesday. And I know, President Terrell, that we might have some people here in the audience who have generally generously donated to the board and to our school district, and I'd like to see if James and Tracy Barker are here, are you? Okay, is there anyone else on the donor list that came tonight? Okay, so we have been sending invitations just to recognize all of our donors, and we thank you for everything that you give to us because we couldn't do it without you. And then finally, on behalf of all of us here on staff, we wish our families and our students a very happy Thanksgiving coming up, and we give the greatest gratitude and our thanks to all of our teachers and our support staff who are providing incredible opportunities to our students. That concludes my Superintendent's Report. So moving on to the agenda, I'm going to ask the board for their consideration to pull an item out tonight, and that is that I have some incredible news, that we have finished our search for a new school business administrator, and it is an honor and a privilege to recommend Mr. Patrick DeGeorge, and I'd like just a moment to tell the board and our community a little bit about Patrick. So Patrick comes to us from Adewan, Aberdeen, where he's served as a school business administrator since two thousand and twelve. He is a certified public accountant and holds a master's degree in the divinities as well as a bachelor's degree in accounting. He is a standard-held certified school business administrator, along with a qualified purchasing agent, that was very important to us. Patrick also has an extensive resume and really demonstrated accomplishments as an auditor, both for public and private entities. And I want to also share that I've had the opportunity to speak to people during the reference check process about Patrick, and this was an extremely difficult process. reference check process about Patrick, and this was an extremely difficult process because Mr. Savage has really served this community as no one has for the amount of time and for his dedicated work and the passion and expertise that he has brought to his position. So this was not an easy position to fill. We had an incredible pool of candidates, a very deep pool, a very well-qualified pool. But Mr. DeGeorge separated from the group when he shared not only his vision but his passion for the work that he does and how his work affects students and teachers here who come to school to learn every day. One of the people wrote that Pat epitomizes what you would want for your students in a leader of a school district. Another wrote that he is the very best in ability, performance, and commitment. Any district would be so fortunate to have him. And lastly, another said after, after serving as 42 years as a school business administrator, this person said that Patrick DeGeorge stands out among any of the colleagues that he's worked with. The reference checking process was incredible because I had an opportunity to learn about the man who has served school districts for such an extraordinary amount of time and service, and to have you have the opportunity to join our Lacy family, we are privileged. So with that, Mrs. Terrell, I would like to recommend Patrick DeGeorge as the School Business Administrator Board Secretary for Lacy Township, and I think the board has a motion on the agenda to the same.
I'd like to direct the board members to page 39K and ask that we consider the recommendation of Dr. Anthony at this time for the Business Administrator Board Secretary employment, and the motion is that the board approve the employment contract for Business Administrator/Board Secretary Patrick DeGeorge, and it's pending the interim county executive superintendent final review. I'd like the board to make that motion now.
Second, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes, and welcome, Patrick.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, welcome.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, welcome.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, congratulations.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, and we're very, very honored to have you part of our Lacy family.
Mr. Schubberger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, and with that vote, I would like to invite Mr. DeGeorge to come up and take an opportunity to say hello to your new community. I'd like to also note that his lovely family is with him. He has his wife here, his mother-in-law, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, and daughter all here rooting him on.
We're all in the clock too, so. Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Anthony, my fellow administrators, staff, students, family, and friends, it is with deep gratitude and profound honor that I accept the appointment to be your next school business administrator, and I promise that in return for your trust in me, that I will deliver service to you that is faithful and honorable. I also want to acknowledge the current school business administrator, Mr. Jim Savage. On behalf of all school business administrators, I thank you for your long and your illustrious service, not only to this school district but to our profession, so I'd ask you to please join me in a well-deserved round of applause for Mr. Savage. It's an honor to succeed you, sir, and I hope that I do you proud.
I'm sure you will, thanks.
If there's one thing that I would want everybody to know about me, it would be that thing which is most important to me, and that is family. I thank my extended family from the Adewan, Aberdeen Regional School District for their years of support and encouragement, not just professionally but personally as well. And I am happy to become a part of this extended family here in Lacy Township, and I look forward to a very long and very happy relationship with all of you. And I want to acknowledge and introduce the people that are most important in my life, my flesh and blood family. My brother-in-law and my sister-in-law, Jerry and Mary Ellen Falkowski, my, thank you. My mother-in-law, the great Marion Huzer. An important footnote about her, as those who met her earlier will tell you, she is excited more than anyone for me to work so close to home in Lacy for two reasons. First, I'll spend a lot less hours on the illustrious Garden State Parkway, and more important than that, I am able to now bring things to her from the world-famous German Butcher. No, that's the thing, really. My beautiful and multi-talented stepdaughter, Katie. And last and certainly, and no, at least, my best friend, the love of my life, my gorgeous and incomparable wife, Patty. That's it for me. I say thank you, and I look forward to working with you to do great things for kids, and who knows, if I play my cards right, I too could be on this great man's show. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
We'll take a brief recess in case any of the students or teachers, I know a lot of teachers have to get up early, would like to leave before we have public comments. If you'd like to stay, please do so.